Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for August 27th. Mayor Pro Tem Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right, we have Councilmember Betsy Nash. To her right, we have Councilmember Drew Combs. And then down off the dais, we have our city clerk Judy Heron. On the phone this evening, we have Councilmember Catherine Carlton as well. If anyone has any item that they wish to speak on tonight, if you could go ahead and fill a comment card out in the back of the room and go ahead and mark the item for which you want to speak, so we know when to call you up when that item is called. If everyone could go ahead and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose extent one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so just a quick report out from closed session. We have nothing to report from closed session this evening. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and come down off the podium, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our chief, Chief Bertini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. I'm going to go ahead and invite a couple of people up here. First, Stephen Foley, would you please come up? I know you don't want to come up, you're a little shy, but that's all right. Right here is fine. And Sergeant Paul? Sorry, I left you hanging. And today, I'm really grateful for Mayor Mueller allowing us to honor Stephen Foley for some actions he took on May 26, 2019. And Sergeant Paul was the sergeant on scene of this pretty horrific crash that occurred on El Camino at Oak Grove. It was about midnight 30, about 12:30 at night, when Stephen and three friends were driving his 1965 Buick Riviera Southbound on El Camino, and they stopped at a red light. And what happened next can only be described as almost like a Hollywood movie. So can we go ahead and play the video? This is actually a video from a surveillance camera from the Sharon Station. You see Stephen's car pulling up to the intersection on the left-hand side. They were at a stop at a red light, and you'll see this in a couple of seconds. So, as you can see, this vehicle that came up behind Stephen's vehicle was going approximately 50 to 60 miles an hour. Did not tap its brakes, did not slow down, and crashed into the back of this vehicle, which caused the vehicle to explode into a ball of flames that you just saw. Luckily, our officers were very, very close. As you see, one is responding right, is arriving right there. And they were down the street on a traffic stop. When they got there and found Stephen, what they found out, through what Sergeant Paul found out, was that Stephen had actually pulled his friends out of this burning car. So, tonight, we honor Stephen. We have some of our Menlo Park's finest, police and fire in the back also, here to help honor Stephen for his heroic actions on that night that helped save the lives of his three friends. And with that, I'm going to be giving Stephen a chief's commendation presented to Stephen Foley. And also, for his actions, a challenge coin from the Menlo Park Police Department. And I know Mayor Mueller may want to say a few words and present something also.
Just, I'm blown away, Stephen. So, and I know your parents must be so proud. So, I also have just a certificate of recognition for you commemorating your accomplishment, what you did that evening so selflessly. And so, I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Certificate of recognition presented to Stephen Foley, whose heroic life-saving actions the morning of May 26, 2019 prevented the death or great bodily injury of his friends by assisting them out of his burning vehicle. The city of Menlo Park proudly recognizes Stephen Foley for his incredible bravery and quick selfless actions which saved his friends' lives, presented on this day. So, you know, whenever we create one of these, they're actually kept. So, we created a second one. It's with our city clerk and actually goes into the city records. So, and there it will remain. So, thank you very much. It's an honor to shake your hand.
Thank you. This is very great. I really wish this didn't happen, but since it did, I'm glad that everyone turned out safe. And I'd like to thank the Fire Department and Police Department. They've all been very great. Everyone I've had to deal with, they've been very nice, and it's great, excellent to deal with everyone. Thank you.
Everything following that is going to probably feel a little boring this evening. So, the next item on our agenda this evening is going to actually is public comment. So, under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name or address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Do we have any public comment cards this evening? Okay. So, with that, we'll go. Oh, we do have one public comment card. Ms. Frandine from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, and you will have a public comment card. What I wanted to do was just announce award recipients for Golden Acorn. And as many of you know, the Golden Acorn Awards is now its 43rd year, and it is a Menlo Park tradition. During the event, the chamber celebrates community achievement through the volunteer efforts and contributions of organizations and individuals. Each year, the nominating committee selects award recipients in the field of business excellence, community service, and professional leadership. The recipients are always individual contributors, small businesses, organizations, and nonprofits, each serving Menlo Park. And the chamber is pleased to announce the 2019 recipients of the Golden Acorn Awards, which includes Cafe Zoe for Business Excellence, Tour de Menlo, Community Service, Mid Penn Housing for Professional Leadership, St. Anthony's Potawatni Room as the Unsung Hero. And additionally, we have two winners for Environmental Stewardship, one being Charlton Properties, and the second being West Bay Recycled Water Share and Heights Project, which is a public-private partnership for water conservation. We value the role that each award recipient plays to strengthen our community and hope that you will join us in acknowledging their contributions, and also to join us for the Golden Acorn Awards, followed by a reception, and that will all be held at Hotel Nia on September 19th. So, please go to our website for additional information, and also help us congratulate the winners. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council member would like to pull from the consent item? Councilmember Nash?
G1.
Any other items to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, can I have a motion? Sorry? Vice Mayor Taylor?
G2.
Okay, any other items? Okay, with that, can I have a motion on items G3, G4, and G5? Let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Carlton, could you state your?
Aye.
Thank you.
I vote aye, thank you.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great.
With items G1 and G2.
Okay, great. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to item G1. Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to pull it out separately and have an opportunity to vote separately from it.
Okay, can I have a motion on item G1? Can I have a second?
So moved.
I'll take that as a second. Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Combs?
That's fine.
Councilmember Combs made the motion. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes with Councilmember Nash dissenting.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and hear item G2. Vice Mayor Taylor?
I'm pulling this item because I do not believe EIRs belong on the consent calendar. There was a comment sent, and I'm sure that most of us didn't read it because it was just received on CCIN, just some concerns about more development in District 1. I know that we are in definite need of housing, but just concerned about access, concerned about what school districts the youth would be in, and also, a big concern of mine is air quality.
Okay. So, as we discussed last week, reasons why items like this appear, why we haven't authorized the city manager to put forward money like these monies to just start EIRs, as so there can be public comment like that. But they are somewhat procedural to start a process. So, that being said, it's great you provided the public comment on it. Are there any other public comment speakers? No, Ms. Heron? Okay, so with that then, does anyone have any other comments on item G2? Okay, can I go ahead and have a motion on item G2? Okay, and can I have a second?
All second.
Okay, Councilmember Nash beat you too at this time, Cat, but thank you. Let's go ahead and vote.
No problem. Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and now move on to our regular business item. First regular business item of this evening is item H1. Received post-adoption review and report of St. Sidney ordinance and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to sunset the Safe City Ordinance as it is now preempted by current state law. Chief Dave Bertini will make the presentation. Chief Bertini.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Before we get into the actual meat of this report, I want to just give a little bit of background, since this goes back to 2017. In 2017, new federal administration caused some concern among segments of our population. There was some talk from Washington about somehow federalizing local police to enforce immigration law, which is deemed to be unconstitutional. That can't be done. But at the time, there was some concern amongst different sections of our population. And at that time, we did a great deal of outreach. We did numerous town hall meetings and presentations to these affected communities about their concerns. At the same time, California legislators were working on legislation to restrict local law enforcement from enforcing immigration laws and restricting the amount of cooperation with federal immigration authorities. Several other cities began to work on adopting written sanctuary or Safe City ordinances, and staff here in Menlo Park were directed to bring back possible ordinances to council. On April 18, 2017, council unanimously passed Resolution 6388, which declared Menlo Park to be a welcoming city and joining the Welcoming Cities and Counties Initiative. Council also passed an ordinance adding Chapter 2.58 to the Menlo Park Municipal Code, which was titled the Safe City Ordinance. This ordinance, which is attached to the staff report, regulated the police department's activity as it related to immigration violations and cooperating with federal immigration authorities. Also required that we, part of that ordinance was that we were required to report back to council about information found, and that is the information that's found in the staff report, to wit, from June 20, 2017 to June 30, 2019, city officials, including law enforcement officers, did not administer any federal immigration law, did not take any action against an individual because of their immigration status, did not inquire about the immigration status of any individual, did not cooperate with any Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE detainer requests. As a matter of fact, we didn't receive any detainer requests during that time period. We also did not provide ICE agents access to any individuals, and we also did not use any city funds, resources, facilities, property, equipment, or personnel for any activities related solely to identifying, investigating, or arresting any person for federal immigration law violations. In January of 2018, Senate Bill 54, also known as the Trust and Value Act, changed the current state law known as the Truth Act, and this change addresses when state and local law enforcement agencies may engage in immigration-related activities. A breakdown of this state law can be found in the staff report and also attached in a Department of Justice information bulletin to the staff report. A side-by-side comparison of the new state law and the Safe City Ordinance indicates that they are legislating the same activities by law enforcement. The California Constitution, Article 11, Section 7, states that a municipality may not legislate in regards to matters occupied by state law, and in this case, our local ordinance is now preempted by state law. Based on this, we recommend council direct staff to return with an ordinance that sunsets Municipal Code Section 2.58 on the basis of preemption by state law. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just to be clear, the state law goes further than what our Safe City Ordinance did, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and so that's why there was a preemption covering it?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions on this issue. Any questions or comments from the dais? No? Councilmember Carlton? No? Okay, can I have a motion?
Oh, that's it.
May I have a motion? Councilmember Combs has made the motion.
So moved.
Councilmember Carlton has made the second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
We're waiting for it to come up. Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on now to item. Thank you, Chief Bertini. We're going to move on now to item H2. Approved updates to the city rail policy to consider the Dumbarton Transportation Project and Caltrain Business Plan efforts. Our Public Works Director, Nikki Nagaya, will make the presentation. Good evening, Ms. Nagaya.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller, city council members. Happy to be here tonight to present to you some draft updates to the city's rail policy. So, in essence, as summarized in the staff report, the existing rail policy was last updated in 2018. It's consistent with a number of the policies in the circulation element relating to the Dumbarton Corridor as well as the Caltrain Corridor, where there is either existing or proposed rail service operating today. The 2018 policy includes three overarching elements. The mission statement for the rail subcommittee, for which Mayor Mueller and Councilmember Combs currently serve on, as well as a statement of principles outlining the city's guiding rail policy structure, and then also a position summary outlining the specific position for rail topics. So, specific for this item tonight, we're requesting updates related to both the ongoing work in the Dumbarton Corridor as well as updates related to the Caltrain Business Plan. So, just a quick summary of each of those projects. The Dumbarton Transportation Project is looking to provide rail service along the Dumbarton Corridor, and so the items listed on the screen, transit stop locations, the type of transit to be provided, et cetera, are the items of consideration that we wanted to address as part of the updates to the policy. The Caltrain Business Plan is essentially a service vision for the Caltrain Corridor, and so this is work that has been ongoing, led by Caltrain over the last approximately 18 months. Items of significance there are really focused around train service frequency as well as service to adjacent cities that we're tracking in relationship to the update of the policy. And then separately, we are also working with Caltrain to come before the rail subcommittee later in September to give a more detailed update on the business planning efforts and where they are in the process. So, the proposed transit service within Menlo Park is shown in the graphic on the screen. This is a snapshot of a figure that was adopted in the city's circulation element in late 2016, and you can see at the top of the screen, the kind of green shaded line is the Dumbarton Corridor that connects from roughly the North Fair Oaks area in Redwood City all the way out to the San Francisco Bay and across into Newark and Union City. And then, the blue line running top left to bottom right on the screen is the Caltrain Corridor with the stop shown in downtown Menlo Park. And then, one other item to highlight in relationship to the Dumbarton Corridor, this map is an excerpt of the draft transportation master plan, and so you can see the green dotted line running left to right across the screen is a proposed pedestrian and bicycle trail, for which the policy is requesting that rail service not preclude the activation of that recreational facility, as well as on the, kind of in the center of the screen, there is a proposed pedestrian and bicycle crossing of the Dumbarton tracks. And as mentioned, I think in your last meeting, there was a request to consider that crossing in relationship to access to the Tide Academy, so just wanted to highlight that. We're not requesting that that be built as part of the Dumbarton Project today, if they were to move forward, but did want to acknowledge that there's another planned crossing of the Dumbarton Line at that location. So, the process we've used to adopt, to bring forward the adoption of the rail policy is to initially started with the rail subcommittee to define these steps. We first took an update to the Complete Streets Commission in May with some draft updates, had public comment that was summarized in the staff report, have incorporated those revisions. It was then heard by the rail subcommittee in mid-July. We heard some additional feedback there and made some additional revisions. And then, since that time, since the staff report was published about two weeks ago, also had feedback from the Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge, who I believe are here tonight and will also speak. And we've also incorporated some revisions that are on the dais and in the back of the room in response to those comments as well. So, the proposed modifications from the 2018 policy, we're not proposing changes to the mission statement for the rail subcommittee, but do have requested modification to the statement of principles referencing quality of life considerations in the city, making sure that the Dumbarton Corridor is consistently incorporated into the policy, and also looking at the edits for sustainability, as well as calling out the need to connect transit ridership benefits with the reduction in congestion. The changes underlined on the screen are those that were suggested since the Complete Streets Commission or rail subcommittee hearings, just to call out the steps in the process that we've taken. And then, the policy itself establishes two summaries, one for Caltrain and one for the Dumbarton Corridor. Caltrain essentially, as mentioned earlier, we're focusing on supporting maximizing the number of trains that stop in Menlo Park, and then, within the Dumbarton Corridor, proposing to support the activation of rail, but with specific conditions, and so those are summarized on the screen. I won't walk through each of those, but just to highlight a few of the items, we've heard a lot of feedback about roadway and railroad grade separations, and so that is really focusing on Marsh Road, Willa Road, and University Avenue, and trying to make sure the traffic flow can be maintained if there is then frequent train service that would otherwise result in gate downtime. So, we don't want to set up a situation similar to what we have with Caltrain, where the gates are down and blocking traffic. Those roads are already congested as it is. The other thing I'd like to highlight here is the request that came during the Complete Streets Commission hearing with a possible second stop requested in the Bell Haven neighborhood. So, that's one of the items that's underlined on the screen. And then, finally, as mentioned, the inclusion of the reference to sea level rise, protection of natural resources and habitat, and that's a markup that wasn't included in the staff report but is in front of you and in the back of the room as well. And with that, we are asking for approval of the rail policy, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any preliminary questions before we take public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and take a public comment at this time. Our first public speaker this evening will be Rick Johnson. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Rick Johnson, resident of Menlo Park and a volunteer with the Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge. And we had a wonderful meeting with Ms. Nagoya last, recently, and it looks like she's incorporated our main concern, and so I'm very appreciative of that. I was very, looking at the general plan, the opening statement talks about Menlo Park being a leader and protecting many things, but including protecting natural resources, and I think that's a wonderful goal, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Van Pelt. Good evening, Mr. Van Pelt.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm a resident of Menlo Park for over 30 years. There are some concepts that I want to make sure don't get sideways into the final document, and these are things that I really believe in pretty firmly. And I've recently attended the high-speed rail meetings, which also included a lot of Caltrain folks and their future plans. So, right here in the CERC 5.3 rail service, we seem to still call this commuter rail service. Everybody else has stopped calling it a commuter rail service, because a commuter rail service typically does not operate all day long. And now, Caltrain is talking about service that operates all day long. So, I would prefer that we stop calling it commuter rail. Then, down here on the CERC 5.5, we talk about reactivate the rail spur. The existing spur just has one track. I'm not sure that that's what is really intended, but I would go ahead and say, I envisioned the first phase of this employing electric buses, and in fact, Facebook has even brought out an electric bus sometime to let us test sit it and things. So, I would see that that would be a preferred vehicle, and it appears to try to eliminate that as a consideration. So, I want to make sure that is not eliminated. And I see this thing going through multiple phases, and each phase may only last several years, but if we are finally going to get to a total regional rail system, that's going to require a lot of planning and things beyond anything we're even thinking about now. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Eileen McLaughlin, and after her, actually, will be Diane Bailey, and she'll be our last speaker on the topic. Good evening, Eileen.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and members of council. I'm Eileen McLaughlin, representing the Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge. And I want to start off by giving Nikki Nagaya a big thank you, looking at our letter and adding in what she gave us the text here, so we know what she was. and adding in what she gave us the text here, so we know what she was proposing to put in here. And I very much thank her for doing so. In looking at it and thinking it over, just in the last few minutes, I would suggest one other addition, and that is the SAFER Project. The SAFER Project intersects with the Dumbarton Rail. And when the time comes, and if sea level rise affects the height of the rail at that point, there's a lot of questions that are going to come up. So, it affects that project. But further, the SAFER Project is going to be what we need in order to restore a lot of the ponds that are right along Bayfront Expressway and the Salt Pond Restoration Project. They can't proceed until there is a levy there. So, there's a number of reasons that that SAFER Project is really valuable to this shoreline. And I suggest putting it in here. And by the way, there is one of your programs in the general plan is specific to the SAFER Project. Thank you.
SAFER, S-A-F-E-R, or how do you spell?
SAFER, that's the flood.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. I'm Diane Bailey with Menlo Spark. We're a local group working towards a zero-carbon future for Menlo Spark, for Menlo Park, and climate-safe future for our region. And I'm here to support the staff proposed updates. We really appreciate the inclusion of some of the new position statements regarding the Dumbarton Rail Quarter. In particular, I wanted to highlight that we appreciate the assertion that rail service be provided by electric trains, minimizing emissions, noise, and vibration impacts to the surrounding community, and also exploration of a bicycle and pedestrian pathway along the existing right-of-way. The other practices related to the Dumbarton Rail Quarter look good as well. And I also wanted to offer support for the Complete Streets Commission recommendations. We very much appreciate the inclusion of all of these recommendations. In particular, I want to note the linkage between increased ridership and reducing traffic congestion, as well as modifying service patterns to include weekend and off-peak hours, as well as providing feeder service for first and last mile connections, considering the feasibility of a second Dumbarton Rail Station to serve the Bellhaven Community, and also encouraging moderate fares for both high ridership and accessibility for people across the income spectrum. Thank you for including these provisions.
Thank you. Okay, that's, we'll close out our public speakers for the evening. Any questions from my colleagues? So, I just will throw this out there. So, with respect to the commuter rail, Ms. Nagaya, is there an issue with getting rid of the word commuter?
No, I think we can strike that from, from the text. I was doing a quick search to try and find exactly where it was showing up, but we can, we can do a search and delete it before we finalize.
And then, the electric buses and the SAFER Project, can that be an item that we look at in our next Rail Subcommittee meeting? I'm looking at my colleague, Councilmember Combs, and he's saying yes. So, why don't we go ahead and put that there? And then, I will go ahead and pass the mic to Councilmember Nash.
I had a question, why it, or if Oak Grove and Glenwood Avenues should be included, along with Ravenswood, which is listed here, where the city intends to pursue grade separation project with a focus on Ravenswood Avenue that can be constructed independent of the blended system? Is there a reason why Oak Grove and Glenwood are not included in that statement?
So, that was direction from the last update of the rail policy in 2018, where at that point in time, acknowledged that potential grade separations could include more than Ravenswood, but the priority location, given the amount of traffic that occurs on Ravenswood, as well as then the potential for queuing from El Camino, Ravenswood was highlighted as the focus. So, I think if you'd like to change that, this would definitely be the place to be able to do that, since the adopted, or the current preferred alternative includes Oak Grove and Glenwood as well.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, that's me, it's what the current preferred alternative is. If we change the preferred alternative, we can go back and revisit it. Everyone okay with that? I'm looking around, everyone seems okay. Councilmember Carlton, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. My question is, the possible second stop in Bellhaven, and if you could put up a map, I can, one of the maps. So, you're saying a second stop, so where is the first stop?
So, the city had a process a number of years ago, looking at potential stop locations, and at that point in time, had called out near the intersection of Willow and Hamilton being the preferred stop location. So, that's what is included in the circulation element, was that recommended stop location. And then, the request that we've, that we heard during the Complete Streets Commission from a public comment was to consider a second stop, particularly around Onetta Harris Community Center, the Menlo Park Senior Center, and Kelly Park. And so, that was, we generalized that to call out that it should be a second stop serving the Bellhaven Neighborhood, but that was the location that was, was requested by the public commenter.
And the rail service is, would operate only during commute hours, this is 24 hours? What would be the potential time?
So, at this point in time, the Dumbarton Project is being led by CrossBay Transit Partners, and so, it's a public-private consortium, public-private partnership between Facebook and the Plenary Group. And so, they've currently outlined a proposal that is more than commuter rail service, but the specific frequencies are not yet final. So, they're still early in the process. They will be kind of vetting those specific frequencies and service plans as they go through environmental review over the next few years.
And the environmental review has already started?
I believe it's started, but they have not, the first major milestone step is what's called a notice of preparation, and so, that has not yet been released, and that starts the kind of public scoping process. So, that will be the city's first chance to weigh in with potentially a comment letter that uses this rail policy and position statement to inform our comment letter on the notice of preparation.
Okay. And then, one of your, excuse me, one of your maps showed some type of red line, red diagram. It's not this one. So, what is the red line?
So, the red line on this map was bus and shuttle service. And so, it was highlighting the routes for shuttle service at the time that the circulation element was adopted in 2016.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki. I just have two more things.
Sure.
One is that the neighborhood is pretty sensitive about being referred to as east, so can we just put Bayside instead of east, since it's technically north?
Sure. I think you can do a read of the policy and verify that there are no references to east in that context.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion? Oh, Councilmember Nash.
Could I please get an update on the grade separations and what's happening with the hybrid versus the elevated and where we are?
Sure. So, at the July 16th Rail Subcommittee meeting, in addition to the rail policy, staff also provided an update on the development of the scope of work for, at that, at that point in time, we had two elements to the next steps. One was to evaluate the financial feasibility of a tunnel, and the second was to evaluate the fully elevated grade separation option. And so, the direction we received from the Rail Subcommittee was to move forward with the fully elevated scope of work, but to remove the tunnel study from the scope at this point in time. So, what we will then do is revise that scope of work, bring it back to the Rail Subcommittee at the next meeting, and then bring it forward to the city council for, for adoption, for approval of the scope, excuse me, not adoption of the.
And I can speak to that. So, we just want to look and see, we want to look at that, we've told folks we look at that viability for fully elevated, and then also, once we have fully elevated and then the other grade steps, we can also look at hybrid options together.
One of the things that I think would be extremely helpful would be some renderings of what does the hybrid look like, what does a fully elevated look like, and how do both of those work with the station, and perhaps even ahead of some of the.
We've asked for the same things, yeah. So, where the station is, whether it's ground level or lifted in a hybrid, yep. And then, and we've also pointed out that just the aesthetics, thoughtfulness and do those aesthetics.
And my impression is, some of what I've heard about the elevated or pieces that I anticipate are part of the hybrid, and so, just actually getting visuals so that we know what we're all, okay.
We're completely on the same page.
All right. And perhaps we can do that before we spend a significant amount of money on a study?
I don't know, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about that in the next Rail Subcommittee, what goes into that scoping, so, but in terms of feasibility and all that, so, but I understand the concern. So, with that, can I? Yep. Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. Excuse me. Have one last question, Nikki. There's a statement on page 81 that says, "Best practice at grade separation, great crossing safety." What does the best practice mean?
So, in that context, this was in reference to the Chico Street Crossing and making sure that it's designed with kind of the best safety measures in mind for an at-grade crossing. So, the initial community feedback that we heard was a desire to see Chico Street kept at grade and not seeing the rail elevation, not seeing the rail be elevated or grade separation at Chico Street. And so, in order to, so that means it would look something like the Caltrain crossings, either at Oak Grove or Glenwood, as examples, in order to make sure that it's safe and at grade, then asking for things like quad gates, which would be protecting vehicles from accessing any part of the rail when a train is approaching, or other measures to make sure that it's then the safest it can be.
Thank you.
Just so the record's clear, since it happened in a Subcommittee meeting, so the discussion around no longer pursuing feasibility on the tunnel is based on the testimony we received in the study session from Professor Bennin of what would be entailed. So, we, I'm satisfied, we fulfilled our, what we promised the public that we would investigate it by bringing in an expert like that to talk to us about that, and having done so, feel like we can adequately move on. And Councilmember Combs agreed with me in the Subcommittee meeting, so that was our recommendation tonight. Excellent. All right, so with that, if we can have a motion to go ahead and move forward the item with the addition of Glenwood and Oak Grove and the deletion of commuter? And we have the motion from Councilmember Combs, the second from Mayor Protem Taylor. Let's all vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Ms. Nagaya?
So, sorry, I just wanted to clarify. So, we found the reference to commuter, it's in the circulation element policies, it's not currently in the rail policy.
So, we won't worry about it in the rail policy, and we can talk about the circulation element later?
Correct, correct.
Because for Brownac reasons, we can't address that tonight. So, with that, we're going to go ahead, and Ms. Nagaya, thank you again. I think the residents were complimentary of your work, and we appreciate it. So, with that, let's go ahead now and move to item H3. Select Concept 3 as the preferred alternative for the Middle Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Rail Crossing Project. Our senior transportation engineer, Angela Obeso, will make the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, my name is Angela Obeso, from, senior transportation engineer from the Public Works Department. And tonight, I'm here to give you an update on the Middle Avenue bicycle and pedestrian crossing across the Caltrain tracks, as well as to get your direction and feedback on the current concepts and direction on how to move forward. So, the action we're requesting from you tonight is to select a preferred concept, and on the screens is a snapshot of the three concepts as they stand today. I'll go into more detail as part of this presentation. A little background, about 10 years ago, there was a series of community outreach meetings and an evaluation as to the best, the best location for a crossing across the Caltrain tracks between Ravenswood and the Palo Alto border. Middle Avenue was selected as part of that public process and evaluation, and as part of the downtown El Camino Real specific plan, it was adopted by city council as the preferred location at Middle Avenue. Then, staff applied for and received a grant from San Mateo County Transportation Authority in order to do the current scope of work, which includes a 30% design plan preparation and environmental clearance of the project. So, that's where we are at today. So, shortly after we got that initial scope approved by city council in 2017, we had our first community meeting. The main purpose of that meeting was to present the community with the two different types we could cross the Caltrain tracks. One is an undercrossing underneath, basically tunneling underneath the rail. The other option is to go over with a bridge. The overwhelming majority that evening and since has been to go under with a tunnel, and so, from there forward, that's what we've focused on. Shortly after this meeting, council received an information item summarizing the occurrences and the discussion and feedback of that community meeting, and all of those pieces of information presentation can be found on the project website. Then, earlier this year, we had our second community meeting, where we presented three different concepts of an undercrossing with two different types of construction of the tunnel portion. The first type is a trench, basically cutting a hole across, removing the rails and installing the tunnel, then refilling and reinstalling the train tracks. The other method is a jack-and-bore, so basically leaving the surface level, the train tracks where they are, and boring a tunnel underneath. The, the pro of the trench is that it's, it's about 10 to 11 feet deep, whereas the jack-and-bore method is approximately 20 feet deep. And so, the two concepts that use the trench method had the overwhelming majority of support that evening and since, because it's much shallower and much less depth for pedestrians and bicycles to have to travel down to. So, here is an aerial view of Concept 1. This is using the trench method, so we would dig a hole, remove the train tracks, and rebuild them after the tunnel is built. Some benefits here is that on the Middle Plaza side, the tunnel opening is relatively aligned with the Plaza, so for visibility from the Plaza side. It's also using the trench method, so it's approximately 10 to 15 feet from either side. Whether you start at the Middle Plaza or at Alma Street, you go down about 10 to 11 feet to get to the bottom of the tunnel. One item of concern with this concept is you can see in the railroad track area, there's a set of what's called crossover tracks. So, basically, when the train, there's a breakdown or some incident where a train cannot move, Caltrain uses these sets of crossover tracks for the trains to move between the two sets, so they can do what's called single tracking, so they can move both directions on the ones that attracts to get around the obstruction. So, the issue here is that we would be building the tunnel and trenching out, we would have to remove both sets of tracks because of those crossover tracks. And then, there's some concerns from an operation standpoint, we would need longer closure time, longer time where all the trains would not be able to go through here. We do have some, some ideas of how we could bridge that with what's called a bus bridge, but there is less flexibility in the construction timeframe. We would have to do both sets at the same period of time, potentially a long weekend. There's also some concern with the constructability and the, and the very narrow tolerances in order to get those back at the right elevations and to avoid any settlement for future operational problems there. So, the consultant team prepared some 3D renderings, we were just talking about 3D renderings, and here's some examples of what Concept 1 could look like. This is, if you're standing approximately where the Big Five parking lot is and looking relatively south towards the ramps and the stairs, so if you're looking over towards, towards the south from the west. And here's on the east side of the tracks, looking about at the tunnel, you're just about where the parking at Burgess Park, near the baseball diamonds and the basketball courts are. Here is. Here is a, here's a plan view, an aerial shot of what Concept 2 would look like. This one is utilizing the jack and bore method. So as you can see, those ramps and stairs are all quite a bit longer than in the previous concept. And that's because you're going down about another 10 feet compared to that. So those need to be much longer. This again is in the crossover track area, but with a, with a bore method, you don't have to alter anything at the surface, so it wouldn't require any reconstruction of that crossover track. So that's less of an issue with this one. This one also aligns with the plaza, on the middle plaza side for visibility. But this one is the highest cost because the retaining walls, the earthwork and the, and the boring method itself are, are much more expensive with this alternative. Again, we have a couple renderings. So here, you're on the west side, so we're kind of flying over about where the 500 El Camino development will be. And looking across towards Burgess Park, you can see the baseball diamonds there in the, in the background. And here, we're on the west side, looking south towards the 500 El Camino development. One thing that I would like to point out here, well, two things, the, the, you can see the ramp and how, how far out that needs to go in order to get down to that depth, that 20-foot depth. But I would also like to, to point out, here in the foreground, you can see what we're proposing, and this is, this is consistent with all three concepts, is a raised crosswalk there. So once you come out of the tunnel, you come up to where the ramps end, there's a raised crosswalk to get across to Burgess Park more safely. So that's something that we can incorporate in any of the concepts. And that yellow arrow right there is approximately where the tunnel would be. And so finally, here's Concept 3. This is the aerial view that we showed at the community meeting at the Complete Streets Commission and also at the rail subcommittee meetings. And so here you can see that there are, the, the tunnel location itself is, is also done with a trench construction. But you'll notice that it's further north than the other two concepts. And what that does is get us outside of that crossover track area. And so it gives us more flexibility because we can, we can close one track at a time if needed, or we can close both tracks and do a long weekend. So that eliminates a lot of the concerns from Caltrain's perspective about the, the reconstruction of the crossover tracks. But it also allows the city more flexibility. If, if we find that one long weekend works best for our construction schedule, then we can do it here. If we find that two long weekends or two shorter weekends works better, this allows that as well and the potential to do what they call single tracking over a weekend. This one here, the tunnel aligns more with the Burgess Park side of, of the project. And so it opens up to visibility from that side. And you'll notice here that the, the ramps and stairs are longer. That's not because they go deeper, it's that they will be shallower. Here, we just have more room to get from, on the middle plaza side, from where we begin to where the tunnel is. And so the nice thing about a, a more level, a more shallow gradual decline in a ramp is that it, it gives better access for emergency maintenance purposes, it's, it's less extreme. And also for some, some folks who have mobility concerns, it could be easier for them to, to access a shallower ramp. So we took this, as I mentioned, we took this to the community and we got feedback and we heard a lot of feedback from different, different parties, bicyclists, pedestrians, parents, different groups, and we incorporated that. We've also had some detailed meetings with Caltrain staff and heard their concerns and their comments about the alternatives. And so what we've done is incorporate all of that into what we've, this is a, a new exhibit, it's a revised version of Concept 3. And so what we're doing here is we've, we've shifted the tunnel just a little bit further north than the previous iteration of Concept 3. But what that does is that allows us to get even farther from the crossover tracks and, and to meet Caltrain standards for how far we can be and, and avoid some of the tolerance issues of reconstructing the, the train tracks. It also gives us some additional room to, to play with value engineering, to see how we can decrease the costs and, and increase some of the aesthetics. So on, for example, on the middle plaza side, you'll notice that there's only a ramp now, there's no longer a set of stairs. And so that was one of our ideas to, to reduce the cost, you'll, you'll require less groundwork, less retaining walls. And throughout the process, we, we received a lot of comments and concerns and requests pertaining to the ramps, but not very many about the stairs themselves. And so the, the, the thought was, if you have a wide enough ramp, and if you can designate pedestrian and bicycle areas on those ramps, which was one of the, the concerns from the public, then perhaps you don't need stairs. And that'll help us reduce the costs a significant amount. And then on the Alma Street side, you'll notice that that ramp there is much shorter than in the previous iteration. And that again, we were trying to work with the utility conflict, see if we can avoid some of that, and also to decrease the cost by having a, a shorter ramp and less, less One other comment that I wanted to address that's not reflected in this revision was a request to have on the Alma Street side, to have the ramp kind of switch back so that the stairs and the ramps both end at approximately the same place where you cross Alma Street to get to Burgess Park. And we did take a, a serious look at that and we had the engineers take a look at the turning radiuses. One of the comments that we heard quite consistently was the need to accommodate not just all bikes, but cargo bikes, trailer bikes, you know, large bikes that need a bigger turning radius than, than some other bikes. And so we looked at that and to, in order to be able to achieve that, the turn was too tight there, they wouldn't have been able to make that, that curve to get back. So we shortened that ramp up as much as we could to try to get it as close to that crossing as we could and still maintain a turning radius that would be reasonable for all, all types of bikes. One other revision we added here is you'll notice on both of the ramps, there's two tones of gray. There's a lighter gray that's wider, and there's a darker gray that's narrower. So another comment that we had was to separate the bikes and the peds or, or some concerns about potential conflicts between the two. And so similar to what is done at the Homer Street Tunnel, that just in the tunnel portion, they have a slightly raised area for the pedestrians. And so what we're doing is we're carrying that idea across through the entire length of the ramps as well as the tunnel, so there's a clear designation for the different modes of travel there. So the faster users would be using the wider, wider area. Oh, and I failed to mention, that's our current staff recommendation, is that revised version of, of Concept 3. So before we made these last revisions, we did some renderings of Concept 3 as well. So I'd like to show them here just for consistency's sake and to give you an idea of roughly where the tunnel would be from a, a rendering perspective. So here you can see the, the length of the ramp and approximately where the tunnel will be. And here on the east side, you're roughly above where Alma and Burgess Streets connect and you're looking north towards the 500 El Camino Development. And I believe, yep, there's a yellow arrow right there roughly where the tunnel location will be. So here's just a quick summary of all the pros and cons that we just discussed for each of the three. With Concept 1, it's, it's, it meets the shallower requests from the community, but the full track closure needed to do the entire length and the, and the issues, potential issues with reconstructing the crossover tracks make that no longer a, a preferred alternative from staff's perspective. Concept 2, utilizing the jack and bore method, the community was, was very concerned about having children and, and other folks, you know, safety concerns about going down that deep into a tunnel. Also, it's the most expensive of all three. And so for those two reasons, we don't recommend Concept 2. And so with Concept 3, you kind of, it's a good, it's a good solution for a lot of the different feedback we've been hearing and a lot of good constructability options for us as we move forward. Also, you'll notice in all the options, there've been a variety of types of ramps as far as layout, whether they're curved and straight or right angles and diagonals. And so if you have any concerns, the feedback about different types, we'd also like to hear that feedback tonight. Really, our main concern tonight is to identify a location for the tunnel and any, anything to move forward with there, and then we can, we can discuss ramp alternatives as we move forward into final design.
Great.
Just a quick little view about the cost. So with Concepts 1 and 3, since those were shallower and more preferred, we did what's called value engineering on both of those. So the black numbers are the original cost, but the red numbers show you what we think we can get it down to by reducing ramps and stairs and things like that. Just a quick little summary of what the Complete Streets Commission gave us, they, they recommended that council approve Concepts 1 and 3 to advance. Tonight, we're asking for Concept 3. And they also had some additional feedback that's laid out in the staff report, and there's an attachment of the amendment that they, that they put together for their motion that evening. So from here, once we get your direction, we will complete the environmental document and the 30% plans by our February deadline with the ultimate goal of opening the project in alignment with the Middle Plaza project. And once they start to occupy, approximately 2022. And here again are the three concepts in summary, and that is what we ask for your direction for tonight. So I will hand it back over and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, there are no public comment cards on this this evening?
Yeah.
All right, great.
No.
No. All right. Any questions from the dais? No. Councilmember Carlton, do you have any questions? Okay. Can I have a motion to move forward, Concept 3, with the staff recommendation? Counsel, I'm, sorry. Mayor Protem Taylor has made the motion. Councilmember Carlton made the second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very, very thorough presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker, I'm sorry, our next item this evening is item H4. Introduction of Ordinance Number 1057, Adopting Updated Building Codes and Local Amendments to the 2019 California Energy Code to Require Higher Levels of Building Electrification and Solar Production for Newly Constructed Buildings to Reduce Greenhouse Gas Emissions Effective January 1, 2020. Sustainability Manager Rebecca Lucky and Sustainability Specialist Joanna Chen will make the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. As you stated in that very long agenda title, we are here to present information to you as you consider adopting local energy codes, known as REACH codes, to require higher building electrification and solar requirements for the new building cycle start date of January 1, 2020. And this would be for new buildings. Joanna's going to walk us through, oh, so before I begin, let me introduce the team. There's many people sitting up here with me who have been an integral part of developing options and reviewing what's the best course of action for you to consider tonight. So at the end here, Chuck Andrews, who is our building official, Joanna Chen, our sustainability specialist. And also behind me, we've had a lot of external support from Abhijit Pandey from TRC. So they've been involved in the statewide cost-effectiveness study and they've been helping count, cities in San Mateo County adopt the local REACH codes. And of course, we have had a lot of input and guidance from the Environmental Quality Commission. So with that, I'll hand it off to Joanna to talk a little bit more about building codes.
So for some background information, building, new building codes, they get updated every three years, and this is also known as code cycles. So the upcoming code cycle will be effective on January 1, 2020. It's mandatory for all cities to adopt. And the code cycle creates a new opportunity for local governments to adopt local building code amendments, known as REACH codes. REACH codes are optional. They are beneficial because they advance local environmental goals and conditions such as reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the building sector. They must be cost-effective and are more energy efficient than the state codes. And the adoption date is recommended to align with the new code cycle start date, January 1, 2020.
So just as Joanna mentioned, usually REACH codes are, local REACH codes are adopted to advance environmental goals based on local conditions that may not be available to other cities statewide. And for Menlo Park, there is a couple of things that are involved with making this an opportunity. The first is that the city council adopted a climate action plan, many, almost several to 10 years ago, it seems like, with a greenhouse gas reduction target of 27% below 2,005 levels by 2020. So that's just next year. And when we have conducted inventory analysis of how much community greenhouse gas emissions are created locally, buildings account for 55% of those emissions. Otherwise, it's known as 196 tons per year. And of, and for buildings, 80% of a building's energy use stems from heating water and the space. And a large majority of that comes from natural gas, which is a fossil fuel that contributes to greenhouse gas emissions and contributes to climate change. And so in Menlo Park, there's also, we also have Peninsula Clean Energy, which over 95% of Menlo Park businesses and residents are subscribed to. They provide 50% renewable electricity and 90% greenhouse gas-free electricity. And they are aiming to be 100% greenhouse gas-free by 2021. And so that's a very unique position for the city to be in, which means if, if buildings are electrified, that essentially all new buildings after 2021 would be greenhouse gas-free. Also important to note that PCE has lower electricity rates than PG&E. And on top of that, the state is requiring power providers throughout the state to be 100% greenhouse gas-free in electricity by 2045. So there's a lot of knowledge out there that some of our electricity comes from natural gas. That is going to be phased out over time. And where it really drives home for Menlo Park literally is that there's anticipated development increases being in the Bay Area. And over the last three-year code cycle, we've seen about 100 new homes being built. And in the planning queue right now, there's 21 anticipated non-residential buildings proposed. And if they're approved, they would be using natural gas. And those include retail, hotels, high-rise residential, office uses in Menlo Park. And so if all of these buildings were allowed to be built using natural gas for heating, it would emit 212 tons of greenhouse gas emissions over the life of the building. And for our greenhouse gas emissions, that would equate to about 5,000 or 6,000 tons more per year. It doesn't seem like a lot, but locally to get reductions, it does take quite significant small actions to add up to meet our 27% goal. And from the last meeting, I forgot to. I don't know if you recognize these, courtesy of Tom Cabot, who's our Environmental Quality Commissioner, sitting in the back here, has helped us with this demonstration. And it kind of gives you a sense of what the emissions are in relation to a 50-gallon shower. So using natural gas, which is this container right here, it produces about eight and a half pounds of greenhouse gas emissions. Using PCE's electricity power mix now, today, would emit about less than a pound. So that's the impact of electrification policy. So how this process was kicked off was that this was included in the 2019 City Council Work Plan, and it was referred to the Environmental Quality Commission to discuss and provide a recommendation to city council. The EQC discussed it over three meetings and provided a recommendation to council to, at minimum, require that all new buildings be electrically heated, which means hot water and space would need to use electricity as their source of energy. And also requires solar for non-residential developments. The state is requiring, under certain circumstances, that residential new homes have solar production. So it complements what the state is doing. And then we presented this to city council on July 16, and the council agreed, but further directed that, that for non-residential, the requirement be all-electric and, and also solar for non-residential buildings. There were some areas to explore that we'll talk about later through stakeholder engagement. And so for tonight, staff is recommending electrically heated homes and low-rise residential and all-electric for new non-residential buildings with some exceptions, and also the solar requirement too for non-residential. So Joanna's going to walk us through what the proposed So Joanna is going to walk us through what the proposed requirements are as we move forward.
So before going into details of the proposed REACH codes, staff would like to be clear that the REACH codes will only apply to newly constructed buildings. So this is buildings that are ground up. This does not include additions or remodels. So for new residential buildings, the definition is new single-home family, single-family homes and multifamily buildings that are three stories or less. Again, this is building, new buildings from the ground up. So at minimum, the REACH codes will require the appliances to be electrically heated for the space conditioning and water appliances, or have an option to go all-electric. So for example, a newly constructed house, they could still use a gas cooking appliance, a fireplace, clothes dryer, but it would still, it would have to install an all-electric space heating and water heating appliances. So this is just a graph to show that one in four U.S. homes are all-electric. From 2005 to 2015, there is a slow increase in all-electric homes. So for a new non-residential, the REACH codes will require some solar, some solar requirements based on the square footage of the building. So for instance, a building that is less than 10,000 square feet, the REACH codes will require a minimum of three-kilowatt PV systems. And for buildings that are greater than or equal to 10,000 square feet, the panel size will be a minimum of five-kilowatt PV systems. So when I say a new non-residential building, some example of that is hotels, offices, retail stores, high-rise residential buildings, which are greater than three stories. The REACH codes will require these buildings to be all-electric. So that includes, but not limited to, cooking appliances, clothes dryers, and water and space heating appliances. So the pictures shows three examples of all-electric, non-residential buildings in the Bay Area.
So as I mentioned before, there are some exceptions that have been made as a result of some concerns that were raised at the last meeting on July 16. The first one is for life science buildings. We had talked to the stakeholders that have life science buildings in the community, and there, there's strong, well, actually, there's not a whole lot of evidence to provide that labs can go all-electric. The only example we were able to find was in the UC system, which has different kind of tenants, different kind of uses. And so where we landed on was that they would still be required to use electricity for water heating, but for space heating, they could use natural gas still. There is a condition that they need to provide evidence that an all-electric option is not feasible in order to grant that exception. In addition, publicly owned and operated emergency operation centers are an area that wasn't explored in detail, and there could be a need for natural gas. Typically, they're owned by public agencies, so there's more control in the design and getting alternatives evaluated as to whether an all-electric design would work for community needs and still be feasible as well. So that's another exception. And the third was from the last meeting that the council had in July, was to exempt cooking appliances for for-profit restaurants. And then this had kind of gone back to the conversation about consumer preferences to cook with natural gas and having that flame versus newer available technology, such as induction stoves. And staff is recommending that this exception be removed as part of the proposed REACH codes, and Joanna is going to walk through some additional information for you to consider.
Okay. So the induction technology has been around for a really long time. It's been introduced, it was introduced in 1933, so that's roughly more than 80 years old. It's popular in Asia and Europe. Because of the increase in demand of the induction cooking appliances, it has driven the prices down, and there has been an increase in selection. So for example, the consumer induction stove, if you compare the gas cook stove, which costs around $1,100 versus the same model, but as an induction cooktop, it is roughly $1,400. So as the induction technology has advanced progressively since the 1900s, for instance, nowadays, there's Wi-Fi and Bluetooth capabilities. So the commercial food industry is leading the way. For example, the French Laundry has an all-electric kitchen. Celebrity chef Curtis Stone, he's also Michelin star. He is an advocate for this technology. According to the 2018 Consumer Report, the top 10 rated cooktops are all induction stoves. So these induction stoves are two to three times more efficient than gas cooktops, making it the most energy-efficient cooking appliance. So the benefits of this technology is that it cooks food faster, it loses less heat in the process, it enhances indoor quality. A study has shown that it produced 30 times less indoor air pollutants than natural gas cooktop does, and it automatically turns off when the pot is removed. So staff is recommending that, to remove the exception because induction stoves are increasingly high-performing, more efficient, and safer in the food industry.
So as Joanna mentioned, a cost-effectiveness analysis is needed in order to adopt local energy REACH codes by the California Energy Commission. So if you do adopt REACH codes tonight, the next step for staff is to submit an application to the California Energy Commission. That's normally a 60- to 90-day review process, and then it goes to the California Building Standards Commission in order to make the effective date start January 1, 2020. And so to present the cost-effectiveness study results, this table compares the cost savings between an all-electric and natural gas building. And the cost-effectiveness study really looked at four building prototypes, the first being a single-family home, and the second, a multifamily, low-rise homes that are three stories or less, office, retail, and a four-story hotel. And there are many different kinds of buildings out there, and so the way the cost-effectiveness study works is that you try to work with the worst-case scenario and be able to apply that to similar building types. And so with that, you really, where your biggest savings are in the upfront construction costs, because you're not having to install natural gas infrastructure. So throughout all of these building prototypes, that's where you see the largest savings. And the last column is operational savings, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide of how that's worked out. But overall, for example, you're looking at single-family homes, you can save up to $6,000 almost a year in infrastructure cost of not having to install it. And over the life of the building, you're saving about $4,400. For hotels, the cost savings is even greater. You're at $1.3 million in savings, and also over the life of the building, you're seeing $1.24 million in savings. So operational savings was calculated using time-dependent valuation. This was established by the California Energy Commission. It looks at long-term projected cost of energy, including peak demand. It also puts a value on greenhouse gas emissions. And so whether the measure is going to produce more greenhouse gas emissions or less, you get a monetary value for that, and it is expressed over the life of the building. Other important local factors that can lead to greater savings is that, as I mentioned before, PCE has lower electricity rates than PGNE. And the study did use the lowest-rated energy efficiency appliances. So that means that there are higher-efficiency appliances out there that consumers can choose from or developers can look at to create even more savings on the operational side of the building. And then the onsite solar requirements can also reduce operational costs significantly as well. And so when looking at the cost-effectiveness study, again, that's a statewide study, so you're looking over all communities, and so they're using the rates that are averaged over all cities. But looking at Menlo Park, with the lower electricity rate, the fact that there's higher-efficiency appliances out there, it's anticipated that people will see lower amounts than what is put in the cost-effectiveness study on the utility bills. So community engagement.
So staff has held three Environmental Quality Commission meetings in February, May, and June of this year, and we also presented in front of City Council on January 16. As far as newspaper, the Almanac has published two articles in July 16 and the 24th, and the Mercury News did mention about Menlo Park's REACH codes effort last Sunday. As far as resources, sustainability has partnered up with Community Development Department to inform developers and contractors of the city's REACH code efforts, and there is an informational REACH code website, or webpage on the city's website.
So the feedback we've received from the community was from property owners, developers, residents, energy providers, nonprofits, contractors, architects, and there is, there was expressed high support from the community, and there was a few that were not in support of it as well and had concerns, really, about the policy. One of the ones that had come about between the July meeting and this meeting was regarding high-rise residential. And there was a conversation about whether the state codes could support water, electric water heating systems, and so, and that the state codes don't provide a pathway for that, and that central, large central electric water heating systems are not commonly used in high-rise residential. So staff followed up with our consultants, sitting behind us, TRC, and the California Energy Commission, and of course, with Chuck, to find out more if there was other alternatives. And the state building codes do allow another pathway to complying in that it's not with a large central electric water heating system. It's with, either you can install individual heat pumps, electric heat pumps in each unit, or the codes do allow more centralized, almost like mini-plants of water heating systems that serve up to eight units, and you can get code compliance with that. And many of the examples, like the one that's in this picture here, are using these mini- plant-type of designs. It's, again, it's very new design. It's not the traditional approach. The California Energy Commission is working on updating their code to allow for these large central electric heating systems. They are used in other countries and other parts of the U.S., but the issue that they're finding is that they need to have very clear guidelines on how to design. You can't just replace a natural gas boiler with these large electric heat pumps. There has to still be a different design. So they're just trying to make sure that people design it right so they don't fail. So, and they expect, they anticipate that to be available in the next 12 to 18 months, based on our last conversation with them. And in addition to looking at the state codes, we did find that there was a good amount of high-rise electric, all-electric buildings in the Bay Area, and so that just, again, provided a way, this is not a common practice. All the concerns that were expressed were completely valid, and this is a cutting-edge policy, as I described in the memo to you. So it does require leadership, too, from the development community to take this on and design differently and have some careful thought to achieve the cost-effectiveness of an all-electric building.
So recommendation, staff recommendation based on City Council direction in July. So for new homes and three stories or less apartments and condos are required to be electrically heated or all-electric. For new non-residential buildings, all required to be all-electric with onsite solar production with three exceptions. For life science, for space heating, emergency operation centers, for-profit restaurants, cooking appliances. However, after further analysis, staff recommends removing the for-profit restaurant cooking appliance exception based on the fact that induction stoves and ovens are higher performing and more efficient than gas, increasing consumer trends for induction cooking appliances, and it's safer for cooks and building occupants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues before we take public comment? Okay. We're going to go ahead then and move on to public comment. We have 10 speakers. And what I'm going to do this evening is I'm going to go ahead and call the person and then the person after them, so they know that they're up next. So if the second speaker could please come forward, so we're ready to go and move expediently, that'd be great. Our first speaker this evening is Ryan Price, and after Ms. Price, it'll be Steve Van Pelt.
I'm Ryan Price. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission here in Menlo Park, and I, my comments tonight are reflecting the EQC's support of this, because we were unanimously supportive of the staff recommendation. This, my talk does not include the recent recommendations, because that did not come from the EQC meeting. But I think, as I said previously, natural gas is a significant contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and as you heard and as you saw in the studies, there's a tremendous amount of benefit to being able to reduce that for our community. This proposal, the all-electric option can reduce up to, or sorry, the average reduction was 67% in most zones in the cost-effectiveness study. We, as a commission, felt like the criteria we could use were both the cost-effectiveness, significant greenhouse gas reduction, ease of implementation and efficiency, and community acceptance. And we felt like this recommendation allowed for all of those conditions to be met. As you heard from Rebecca, this time is critical for Menlo Park. There's, you know, development pending, both residential and non-residential, and we wanted to make sure that, as a community, we were able to take action to prevent additional greenhouse gas from entering our community. So in closing, the EQC strongly recommends that City Council authorize this and approve the staff recommendations. Personally, I would also say that my, I personally believe in the additional recommendations, and I was very thrilled to hear that we would take additional steps to address non-residential greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Van Pelt, and after Mr. Van Pelt will be Adam Stern. Good evening, Mr. Van Pelt.
Yes. Hi. I'm Steve Van Pelt, and I want to read some things off of Page Four. In the second paragraph, it talks about Menlo Park's life science stakeholders are concerned about the grid reliability, this being the electric grid, and there seem to be provisions to take care of this. And then in the fifth paragraph, "Emergency operation centers may need natural gas access in the event of disaster or emergency where electricity is not available." So these statements are a little different than what was in the presentation, and it was these statements that got me thinking. And basically, I realized, I've never had a gas outage at my house. I've had four electric outages of five hours or more in the last year, and two in the year before that. And in the 15 years I've had a security system that would inform me of this stuff, I haven't had any others that I know of. So I'm really concerned about the reliability of the grid. This may just be in my part of Menlo Park. I have no idea. But I have actually tried to go through PGNE and get more information on the outages. It turns out, they've done a great job of, and they are responsible for giving the electricity to your property, no matter where you buy the electricity. They do a great job of sending you an alert, but when it's all fixed, it disappears. There's no way you can go back and research this stuff. So you don't know if it was 13 houses that were out, one house that was out, or 300 houses that were out. In the idea of you can only manage what you can measure, I don't know what kind of leverage we have over PGNE. But I think we really need to have better information out of their data and have it available to us, so that they, we can help them pinpoint some of these problem areas that really are causing electric outages. And again, I can't say how much of a problem this is, but I'm hoping there's some way we can get the information made from the data to really assess this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Stern, and after Mr. Stern will be Tom Cabot. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I'm Adam Stern. I'm a longtime environmental activist and lived in Menlo Park for seven years, and I speak on an evening when the Amazon is on fire. We've experienced record temperatures in large parts of the world, and it's very easy to think that climate change is a problem that we can't get our hands around. And yet, tonight, the council has an opportunity to take a step of leadership. It's going to be increasingly It's gonna be increasingly critical for localities to state their direction and commit to the most advanced policies possible to help electrify our buildings, to move away from natural gas, which is a fossil fuel that contributes to global warming. And this is a unique opportunity for Menlo Park to get ahead of where things are headed. There's enormous movement towards electrification in California. You follow that Berkeley just a month ago passed a resolution to ban natural gas in new buildings starting in 2020. And this reach code, which has been reviewed by many stakeholders in the community, is an ideal opportunity to put a stake in the ground and say Menlo Park is gonna lead on the path towards getting to carbon neutrality and eventually advancing all of our policies around buildings, transportation, and other sources of greenhouse gases to reduce them eventually to zero. I'll just say that the particular feature that we have as residents of Menlo Park, because we're part of Peninsula Clean Energy, as the grid is getting cleaner, we want to electrify as many things as we can. Our buildings, our cars, our other sources of energy use. And to the extent that this policy will clearly put Menlo Park in the forefront of climate policies, and we want to encourage you to support and pass this resolution for the reach code.
Thank you. My next speaker this evening is Tom Cabot, and after Mr. Cabot will be Diane Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I want to start off with four thank-yous. One is for, to you, early in the year, for putting reach codes onto the work plan for staff, so that they, they could budget time to take a careful look at this and to develop something really creative. And they've done that. The next thank you is to the staff and the city attorney for, for taking in all that information and looking for a simple way to administer this and to come up with a plan that will be easy for them to implement, easy for the community to understand and move forward with. Then, thank you to my fellow commissioners for carefully considering all this information and weighing in thoughtfully on it, and coming out in unanimous support for what the staff had developed. And thanks again back to the commission for that really inspiring April sustainability resolution, in which you mentioned the three tenants put forward by the IPCC in their October 2018 report. That said, if we're really going to get a handle on this climate problem in time for it to matter, we have to start taking actions that are rapid, that are far-reaching, and that are unprecedented. And again, when I think of those three things, and I'm a retired city staffer in a nearby city, I, I look at those three things, and those are an anathema to me as a city staffer, to have to go rapidly, far-reaching, and unprecedented. I was always asked to slow down and follow others. But we have to change that. That slow is no longer a prudent speed. When it comes to the climate problem, we have to move fast. We have to move out of our comfort zone. And so if we're feeling comfortable, it's an indicator we may not be doing enough. We may be letting the problem get ahead of us. Mr. Stern spoke about the Amazon is on fire. Also, the past two months, June and July, were record-setting months for temperatures globally. We've hit new records. Massive amounts of ice are melting. So things are getting tough out there. We need to move fast. I want to fully support staff's recommendation with their modification to also implement the clean, safe induction cooking in commercial restaurants. I think we need to move quickly on this matter, and I think our action will help set the stage for leadership. And leadership is the best place for Menlo Park. If people look to us with all the education, the wealth, and the venture capital around here, plus being trapped between the rising sea and the coming firestorms, if we're not acting fast, who should? So leadership really matters. Thank you for, for taking your part in that and guiding us along.
Thank you, Mr. Cabot. Our next speaker is Diane Bailey, and after Ms. Bailey will be James Payne.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm with Menlo Spark, a local community climate action group, working towards a carbon-free future for Menlo Park. And I really want to thank you, I want to thank the city for leadership on climate action. This is a really important policy in front of you tonight. And it got here thanks to a lot of really hard work from city staff and from the Environmental Quality Commission. And I think the whole community is really grateful for all the hard work that went into this. About 50 cities across California are exploring reach codes for clean energy and healthy homes and buildings this year. And it turns out that the city of Menlo Park has the strongest reach code, that's the most protective and the healthiest for the community. And so I really want to commend you for that. This is the single biggest climate action that the city can take this year, and it can't come soon enough. As my colleagues have pointed out, we're really starting to feel the impacts of climate with the heat waves. We are looking at a five-fold increase in wildfire risk in California due to climate change. And probably the biggest risk that we face here locally is from sea level rise, and our bayside community unfortunately is really the most vulnerable here. By the end of the century, we could be looking at major flooding of the Bayfront Expressway and the Bellhaven community. And this translates to 1.2 billion in assets at risk or more. But the thing is, cities are in a great position to really lead on climate action. And while Santa Clara County this morning took action declaring a climate emergency, that's a great step. But what I'm seeing from the city of Menlo Park is action, and that's the really important thing, is translating concern over the climate crisis into action. This reach code policy is a highly visible and practical step forward to address the climate crisis by breaking the cycle of dependency on fossil fuels in our buildings. Each new electric home saves up to four tons of carbon every year. And there are other benefits as well that have been mentioned by others, namely, saving a lot in costs, about $6,000 per home when homes go electric, and also substantially improving the health and safety of our community. We're grateful again for the significant leadership here, strongly support the code, and hope that you'll move this evening to adopt this reach code. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is James Payne, and after Mr. Payne will be Andrew Marcos. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So my name is James Payne. I am a resident of Menlo Park, specifically of the Bellhaven neighborhood, and I'm also a member of the Environmental Quality Commission, though I'm speaking tonight only on my own behalf. First of all, I'd like to reiterate the thanks that the last two speakers have given you with regards to the strong action you've shown in particularly recent months with regard to your proposed additions to the reach codes, but also your adoption of the Climate and Sustainability Resolution earlier this year. Adopting these proposed reach codes will not only make major strides towards the greenhouse gas reductions that are part of our climate action plan here in this city, and meeting those goals laid out in the Climate and Sustainability Resolution, but will also make similarly great strides towards improving the health and safety of our community as well. Elimination of natural gas will improve air quality, as well as reduce the fire and explosion risk posed by natural gas infrastructure, which is a particularly acute threat in an area that's as fire-prone and earthquake-prone as we unfortunately happen to be. So adopting these reach codes will offer Menlo Park the opportunity to be a leader and a model city, not only to the Greater Bay Area, but really to the country as a whole. As people have mentioned before, this is a, an area-wide, a nationwide, a global crisis, and we need strong action. And so with that, I just want to offer my full support to the recommendations that staff has made tonight, and thank you again for the work you've taken so far and for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Andrew Marcos, and after Mr. Marcos will be Ronan Vengosch.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Andrew Morkos with GrayStar. I am here to speak specifically about the high-rise residential addendum that was added. I want to say thank you to staff. We've spoken to them several times over the last couple of weeks, because we had concerns over this. They determined that their initial recommendation was not feasible. And so we were able to work with them to provide something that was more feasible. I'm still scrambling, to be honest with you, to figure out how this is going to work. But we're gonna take the challenge and try to work on this. I would just ask that if council decides to require the recommended action on high-rise, that the space used for these central water heaters be excluded from the floor-to-area ratio. My reasoning is that we shouldn't be docked for including these systems in our buildings, and it'll make it much easier for us to take on this challenge. And I don't, I say challenge seriously, it's not going to be easy to do this, and I've been scrambling with consultants to figure that out. So if you would please take that into consideration, we can do this together and try to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ronan Vengosch, and after Mr. Vengosch will be Dashir Leeds. Mr. Vengosch.
Good evening. My name is Ronan Vengosch. I've been a resident of Menlo Park since 2003. This is where my wife and I have chosen to raise our three kids, and I want to say that I'm very proud to be a member of a community whose citizens and leaders take climate crisis so seriously, and that are determined to take whatever action we can to do something about it. The federal government is neglecting its duty to protect our nation against this slow-moving disaster. And so it falls to the state and local governments and communities everywhere to do what we can to protect ourselves. I urge you all, not only to vote in favor of the proposed rules, but also not to stop there and continue to take local action to address this crisis. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Dashir Leeds, and followed by Mr. Leeds will be Scott Shell. Good evening, Mr. Leeds.
Hello, Mayor and city council. My name is Dashir Leeds. I'm a conservation assistant with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter. Our chapter is in strong support of these reach codes. And I, I think it's just so incredible that we're doing this, because this is a step that we absolutely need to take. I think that every piece of natural gas infrastructure that is built in the future is a huge liability that we are absolutely going to have to deal with. There's gonna be huge public health impacts from natural gas, as we've heard from before, how it releases formaldehyde, carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide into our indoor air, creating levels of indoor air pollution that would actually be illegal according to EPA standards if recorded outside. I think that's pretty incredible. And this pressurized natural gas infrastructure in the pipes underground is constantly leaking and exposing our atmosphere to high levels of methane, which is extremely bad. And then, of course, we have the shrinking user population of natural gas, who are gonna be shouldered with the increasing cost of natural gas infrastructure as that user base continues to diminish and gas ceases to become a less, or becomes a less and less viable option. So I think taking this early step to make sure that our buildings are all-electric is something that's really smart for us, and I think it will be a beacon for cities around the country and hopefully the world as sort of a great first-step action that we can take to reduce carbon emissions in the short term, in a way that also includes really long-term benefits, giving us a solid foundation. So, thank you for considering this. Thank you so much to staff for working on this. This is really an amazing reach code. And thank you for all the community members and advocates who have supported it.
Thank you, Mr. Leeds. Our next speaker this evening is Scott Shell, and after Mr. Shell will be Ms. Frandine. Good evening, Mr. Shell.
Good evening. Scott Shell with the EHDD Architects. Thank you so much for this reach code. I'm in strong support. Our firm is 65 people. We work all over the Bay Area. I submitted a slide deck with examples of all-electric buildings we've done, and dozens and dozens that my colleagues have done. When this started getting talked about last year, I had to do my homework. So I went and asked all of our mechanical engineers, I went and asked a bunch of my colleagues at other architectural firms, are we ready for this? You know, I've got, I'm the guy who has to sign the drawings, and if something goes wrong, I get the gall from the client and so forth. So we did our homework, we asked everybody what they thought, and they said, yes, we're ready for this. We did our first all-electric building about 19 years ago. We've done a dozen. It was expensive when we started, it's no longer expensive, it's now cost-effective. We had good luck with it, our clients love them. I do think this is a model code, I think other people are gonna copy it, and so I have a couple of minor suggestions I would like to put on the table for your consideration. On single-family homes, I understand the issue with gas stoves and fireplaces, but I don't understand why dryers are included like that in that, so I would propose that those were removed from that exclusion. On the other exceptions, a lot of the reach codes that I've been involved with in the Bay Area have been preparing for, to make things electric-ready if they keep appliances. So if you keep the dryers and for the stoves, I would encourage you to make it electric-ready. All of those appliances already have electricity to them, they've got the circuit, all you need to do is make the wire a little bit bigger. It's almost free to do it, and that way, when somebody wants to change out their stove, they don't have to hire an electrician to come tear open, tear open the sheet rock in their walls. So it becomes super cost-effective. The third is on the labs, to make those electric-ready. There are multiple labs out there that are all-electric, but I think at least you could make them electric-ready. And so for that, I would suggest something like, labs that use gas for heating shall be designed so that they are electrification-ready by providing a schematic design showing the location and adequate space for future electric heating equipment, and provide adequate electrical and structural capacity. It'd be a simple thing for the architect and engineer to do, just show a diagram where those things go, so in 20 years, when that equipment wears out, you can replace it without having major structural or space retrofits. On the reliability issue, appliances today, gas appliances require electricity. Your stove, all of those things have electric ignition. So if the electric goes out, you still can't use your gas heater or your gas-water heater. They have to have electricity to work, so it's not a reliability issue. And in five seconds, Florida, 60% of the restaurants are all-electric. It's technically possible. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker this evening is Ms. Frandine. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Frandine, Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce supports the analysis and assessments in support of reach codes, which were brought forward by the Environmental Quality Commission and the staff report prepared for City Council meeting on July 16th. Peninsula cities have, either under current consideration or adopted, or already adopted reach codes, and Menlo Park should pursue similar measures. However, each city is unique in its evaluation and manner of implementation. On July 16th, under regular business, council discussed potential amendments to the 2019 California Business Codes, and council direction included to further analyze all-electric requirements for new life science laboratories, and to include cooking, which was not an original recommendation. Although Menlo Park is more advanced than many other cities within the county, most cities, including cities such as Sematell's recent reach code adoption, or San Jose's current consideration, exclude cooking. In the same manner in which staff has recommended an exception for life science buildings, laboratories, and emergency operations centers, we request that cooking be excluded at this time from the proposed ordinance for further evaluation. All uses are core for the Menlo Park business community and deserve additional consideration. We support the adoption of a modified ordinance. We support life science and emergency center exclusion. We do not endorse mandatory exclusion of cooking at this time. However, we recommend that this move toward all-electric cooking be carried forward through alternatives or incentives, not an immediate mandate. Thanks very much for your consideration of our requested modifications, which could be incorporated into the ordinance considered tonight and carried forward through the second reading at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment cards that have come in? No. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and close public comment, and go ahead and come back up to the dais. So, does anyone have any comments? So I actually do. So, right off the bat, on the floor-to-area ratio that was raised by Mr. Marcos, I don't believe we can do that tonight, that'd have to come up on another agenda. So let's tag that for another agenda for discussion. But, Mr. Marcos, we can't talk about that tonight, because it's not, it's a Brown Act requirement. But I understand the concern, so it's something we should talk about. But there was something you said that I do want to key in, and that was that we're gonna try. You guys are gonna try. And when I, and that's really what I, I loved hearing it, because that's what these reach codes are supposed to induce. We want people to try, we want to try more. And it goes back, I want to thank, there's a lot of people to thank for all their work on this. But at the beginning of the year, when we were going ahead and we put in this in our council, and looking at my colleagues, when we put this into our council priorities, I actually expected this to be a expected this to be a tougher meeting, and I think it kind of shows, and I think staff expected it to be a tougher meeting, and I think it kind of shows if we hadn't have started to try then, where would we be now? We would have missed this opportunity, and it's really great to see everyone coming together and trying to make this work. There are some great comments that were brought up tonight. With respect to Ms. Dean's comments about the commercial kitchens, what I actually think I'd like to do there is actually create a process whereby there can be an appeal to the EQC to see if there's some sort of issue that needs to be worked out. I don't want to create an exception for them. I'm looking at my colleagues, love to hear your thoughts on this. I don't want to create an exception for that off the bat, but rather an appeal to the EQC to determine if there is some hardship that has to be overcome in order to put in those kitchens, those kitchens for the commercial properties. Mr. Combs.
Yeah, just so I'm making sure I understand you. So you're saying accept staff's recommendation on that to, to not exclude, like restaurant?
I'm not talking about restaurants yet. I'm talking about the, for commercial properties, the kitchens that they would have, like a tech campus or something like that.
Of which we already prohibited.
We already have said that we're going to, we're going to require that to be all-electric, so that's the rule there, but then, but they can seek an appeal to the EQC if there's some issue, and let the EQC decide whether or not there's a feasibility issue. And so I'm not sure how that can be worked out, but I think that, at least that way, we've allowed some issue, some recourse if there's some issue that's been, does everyone sound like that makes sense? Yeah. Councilmember Carlton, are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, that's fine.
With respect, and I'm curious here where you guys are with this, with respect for the exception for, for-profit restaurants, my issue with this is I'm not sure we've really given people enough notice that we were going to do that, and so that might, and initially it wasn't something that was in it, and so my, my question is every year, the code is updated. Is that something that could be brought back in the next year for the restaurants?
So reach codes can be adopted at any time, but preferably for consistency in educating permit applicants, we try to align it with the building code cycle, so the next one would occur in 2022?
How do my colleagues feel about this issue? I'm torn. Councilmember Combs.
I could be supportive.
You could be supportive of moving it into the restaurants?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Carlton, can you be supportive of removing the exception for restaurants, for for-profit restaurants?
I actually like the exception for restaurants for the reasons we discussed before, but I could be persuaded either way.
What if we adopted this?
I feel really strongly about it.
What if we adopted the same procedure, that there could be an exception, if, an appeal brought to the EQC, so if there was some cooking method or something that they thought wouldn't work, that restaurant in their process for appeal could go ahead and come to the EQC for feasibility? Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yeah, and I think we almost sort of have to provide that if we're providing it for the commercial kitchens, then this exception. My one question would be then that like, then any decisions of the EQC, could that then be appealed to, to council, right?
Yeah, I think that could then be appealed to council. So I'm fine, actually, if with that inclusion, I'm fine with that, accepting staff recommendation with the exception that can go to the EQC and then council. If there's some, I am not an expert in cooking, but it may be that there's some sort of cooking method that would require flame. I actually like the electric-ready, the electric-ready recommendations. Love to hear from staff, what they think about those recommendations. So for the exceptions that were applying to life science, but also then for dryers and residential, is there anything precluding that would affect the study or anything precluding us from saying, yes, fine, you can go ahead and install gas, but it needs to be electric-ready for someone who wants to later move to electric?
From a building standpoint, that's very easily done. It makes sense in that, in that respect.
Then let's include it. Anyone agree with that?
So just so I'm understanding, because right now we have an exception for dryers, right? And so are we removing that exception and saying that dryers also have to be electric and then only allowing the exception, we're talking about single-family residential, only allowing the exception for cooking, but saying that that has to be electric-ready? Is that what we're saying? Are we saying what?
No, I think we hadn't removed it for dryers, I think we hadn't removed the exception for dryers yet. We were just saying everything in the house had to be electric-ready.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, so we're just on the, everything has to be electric?
Electric-ready for both residential and the commercial labs, the life science labs. Everyone's in agreement on that? Yes. Councilmember Carlton, are you in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I think then we have hit all the major, are there any other points that anyone has questions about? Mr. McClure.
Yeah, I'm a little, so number one, with the modifications, changes that you've requested, we'll need to bring it back for reintroduction. So if you give the direction, and so that cannot occur on September 10th, that would have to come back like on September 24th.
That's fine. It can come back on a consent item, right?
It's an introduction, and you can do it on a consent at a regular meeting. It has to be adopted at a regular meeting. Can be introduced at a special meeting. What I'm not quite clear about are what are the standards for an appeal?
Why don't you give us some options for that?
Okay. We will talk and we'll get, we'll provide some.
We'll provide it as a regular item then? So we can discuss and pick it?
Exactly. And then the floor area ratio question is really a zoning ordinance issue. That would have to go through the Planning Commission for consideration, but we can put it up for a topic for discussion as part of that agenda. So you can provide direction or suggest, you can either say, yes, Planning Commission, take a look at this, or no, we're not going to consider it.
All right, great.
Okay.
Excellent.
But I think that's it.
All right. Are we all in agreement? Councilmember Combs, looks like you have.
Yeah, just, just so, so we are though allowing the exception for dryers, right?
Right.
Okay. But just a question, since that came up during comment, I mean, so where is the technology there? Why are we allowing this exception for, for dryers? I mean, I, I can understand the sort of cooktops, but give me some, just a little bit more clarity on why, why we have the exception for dryers?
So it was for simplicity of implementation and efficiency, so we were targeting the highest building energy use, which again is water heating and space heating, without getting too much into the details of excluding and including these items and trying to explain that to a permit applicant at the counter.
How do you guys feel about that? Councilmember Combs?
I mean, I'm saying, if we're saying that essentially for those areas of the house, the hookup now has to be electric, I mean, I guess it has to be anyway, then I don't see why we're allowing the exception. I feel if we're talking about, you know, reaching in some way, I think sort of not allowing the exception for, for restaurants is, to me, far more of a reach than, than saying that dryers have to be electric.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine actually including electric dryers into the ordinance myself. Everyone in agreement? Yeah. Councilmember Carlton, are you in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we have then clear direction, and that there's no other, nothing else to be added from everyone?
Question?
Yes. Council, Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. My question was one of the public comments regarding reliability of the grid, so I didn't know if there was any follow-up information. I believe it was Mr. Van Pelt.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting comment. I mean, so.
So have our energy consultants.
That would be great. I mean, my, my response to that is when the grid is down, my refrigerator doesn't work, and I got to take a cold shower, and I can't, I won't be able to use my range top, but I mean, the, I mean, if it's, if when grid is down for sustained period of a long time, then you really start to have issues, but let's let the energy consultant.
Yeah, I think I just want to add maybe two points. I think Scott Shell mentioned this as well, like if, when electricity is out, some of your gas appliances not going to work, so that reliability concern goes for both gas and electric systems. The other is looking ahead a little bit, as we are getting homes that have solar on it, eventually they'll have batteries and so on, going all-electric actually makes it more resilient, because the grid might be out, but you have your solar panel working. Second, if you talk with any gas utility, they'll let you know that, let's say there's a earthquake event, which is probably going to happen sometime in the Bay Area here, there's a lot of natural gas stored in the infrastructure there. Unlike electricity, when you can flip a switch and turn off those electrons from coming into my house, you can't turn off gas from out of that pipe, so there's a certain amount of burn rate that is going to be baked into that natural gas infrastructure. So going to an all-electric, yes, you are potentially looking at a scenario where the electricity does go out, but it actually does make you safer over the longer term.
Isn't it the case that as we move to a more electric infrastructure, that you're looking at microgrid resiliency with battery storage?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we're just actually just, we're going where the market is actually already headed, but we're just, when, when, when the energy providers are looking at where to provide those resilient microgrids, we'd probably be one of the first on the list?
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. Any other direction tonight from my colleagues?
So if I could just, sorry, one more clarification. So part of the process is going to the California Energy Commission and the California Building Standards Commission, and there is a review process of about 60 to 90 days, and so if, if we, if this comes back to council toward the end of September, we are at risk of not being able to implement starting January 1st, 2020. And so I just wanted to, again, we can adopt reach codes at any time, but in order to make it streamlined and educate permit applicants, it's helpful to start at the same time. The Energy Commission is working diligently to make sure all cities' applications, because as Diane mentioned, over 50 cities are doing this, they're going to hear applications, and their plan is in November and December to kind of have them as a bulk to approve. And so what we're trying to do is make sure we submit the application at least by October 1st, and so based on this timeline, we'd have the second reading October 15th, I think. So anyway.
Well, then let's see what we can do for this timeline. So September 10th is our next meeting, and the second meeting would be September 24th. Is that right or no? So if the second means September 24th, why are we, we have a September 10th and a September 24th right now?
So the problem with the 10th is the reports do out the day after tomorrow, and if you want to create an appeal language and standards for appeal, that's going to be tough to put that in a staff report and out by Thursday.
Yeah, I'm looking at my colleagues. Councilmember Carlton, do you have any objection for a special meeting just for the purpose of a second reading?
No, we can't do a second reading in a special meeting. Ordinances have to be adopted at a regular meeting. So you can introduce it a special meeting, but the ordinance has to be adopted at a regular.
Then let's introduce it in a special, so we'll figure, I'll meet with Starla, with our city manager, and we'll figure out a special meeting date that we can introduce that will work with everyone's schedule. Does that work for everyone?
The, I mean.
Okay.
That's work, that, that works.
Shall I throw out the option that you don't want to hear?
What's the option you don't want to hear?
I, we do a late report on the meeting for the 10th, and we put the report out next Thursday, and I'm looking at Carr, I think we can do that and have the staff report out probably before next Thursday, but.
Okay. Whatever you guys, I mean, if, either way, well, council will be accommodating if it can't get done, but we, but obviously, I think we probably all prefer not to do a special meeting, so.
I think that's the best, worst alternative, or the least worst alternative. How's that?
Awesome.
So we'll put it on the agenda that goes out Thursday. We'll put a notation in it. The staff report and the revised draft ordinance will be released at a later date and the agenda updated.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, and I want to thank Diane Bailey, Tom Cabot, Environmental Quality Commissioners, Mr. McClure, and our staff, this is, and everyone who showed up tonight to speak on the issue, thank you so much, so. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item, actually, we're going to go ahead and take a short, short recess, so five minutes. Okay, everyone, we're going to bring this meeting back to order, so our next item on the agenda this evening is item H5. Let me go ahead and. Item H5 is the authorization of the issuance and sale of 2019 general obligation refunding bonds from the 2001 election for the purpose of refunding outstanding general obligation bonds, Series 2009A and 2009B, and approving the related documents. Our budget manager, Dan Jacobson, and management analyst, Kristin Middleton, will make the presentation. Good evening, Mr. Jacobson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. As mentioned, Dan Jacobson, Finance and Budget Manager, and Kristin Middleton, who's done most of the work. Also available for questions this evening are Chris Lynch from Jones Hall as Bond Counsel and Alex Lane from PFM as Financial Advisor. So in recognition that it is fairly late, though perhaps not as late as we might have expected, this will be fairly brief, though we will be available for questions at the end. We'll do a brief overview of general obligation bonds in general, the original bond measure, Measure T, the 2001 election, go over the refunding process and the options, and then discuss next steps in the possible scenarios of the decision tonight. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kristin, who will talk about the general obligation bond overview.
So general obligation bonds, or GEO bonds, are commonly used as a way for municipalities to raise funds for projects, which are above and beyond the city's general operational budget. GEO bonds are backed by the credit and taxing power of a municipality, paid through taxation or revenue from projects, and in this case, an ad valorem tax override, which means that the property owners pay a portion of the debt service proportional to their property's assessed value. GEO bonds allow for projects to be financed at the same time as use of a service, allowing for concurrent funding and service provision for, of a project, as opposed to saving for a project ahead of time. Assets are not used as collateral when GEO bonds are issued. In November of 2001, two-thirds of registered voters approved a ballot measure under the Measure T Bonding Authority to issue bonds to be used for the renovation and expansion of parks and recreation facilities in Menlo Park. The city issued one series of bonds in 2002 for approximately $13.25 million, which was later refunded in 2012. The city also issued two series of GEO bonds in 2009. The Series 2009A bonds were issued for approximately $1.1 million and are tax-exempt bonds. The Series 2009B bonds were issued for approximately $9.4 million and are taxable Build America bonds with federally subsidized debt service payments. Both series of bonds can be refunded with a single series of tax-exempt refunding bonds. The city has approximately $14.3 million of remaining new money bonding capacity, which will not be affected by the refunding bonds. Now I'll hand it back over to Dan to discuss the refunding process.
So as Kristin mentioned, these are available for refunding as of August 1st of this year, the 2009 GEO bonds are, and so that's the action that we're bringing forward to you today. If council authorizes the sale of these refunding bonds, what will happen is the city will go to sale for these bonds, sell them on the market. We do have some potential rates, so the rates are determined at the time of sale. Staff is recommending a competitive sale rather than a negotiated sale due to the city's financial position. The all-in true rate estimate as of now is 3.1%. The current rates of the 2009 A and B range from 5% to 7.02%, so that difference is the amount that stands to be saved by the taxpayers. So the result would be that the override tax for those taxpayers would go down, ultimately saving the taxpayers money. In terms of the order of magnitude here, the overall savings, the average annual debt service savings is about $125,000, and the net present value is approximately $2.06 million, or 21% of the principal outstanding. It's also important to note that if the city, if the rates that were given in a competitive sale were less than 3% of the outstanding, the city would not proceed with the sale. That's to follow the city's debt management policy. So in terms of next steps, City Council may either authorize or decline the issuance of the, and sale of the 2019 GEO bonds to refund those outstanding ones. Staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation due to the potential savings and market conditions at this time are to issue those currently. And if authorized, the city will hold a competitive sale and reduce those future override tax rates. Again, they could not go up because the city would not proceed with the sale if the rates did not save that 3% or more. And if declined, the city may pursue refunding at a later date. The debt service would remain unchanged. Those rates are already set for the current issues. It is important to note that any future consideration of refunding sales would be at those market rates at the time. The current market rates are very favorable for refunding. So, at this point, we're available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, do we have any comments on this? No public comment this evening. Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any questions on the phone? All right, with that, I just want to say fantastic. So, fantastic. Very, very, very excited about the opportunity here and very appreciative of staff to be on it. So, thank you so much. With that, if we can get a motion? Motion by Councilmember Nash, second by Councilmember Combs. Go ahead and vote. Councilmember Carlton, your vote? Okay, we may have lost Councilmember Carlton, but we have, we'll just go ahead and proceed with the four votes.
The motion passes with Councilmember Carlton abstained.
All right. And then, our next item on the agenda this evening are the informational items. There are no presentations. Staff is available for questions on the informational items. The informational item this evening is the City Council Agenda Topics for September to November 2019. Are there any questions on those? Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move from item I-1 to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Robinson?
No reports this evening.
Okay, and we're going to move on now to City Councilmember Reports. Item K-1, Verbal Report from the City Council Subcommittee on Planning and Zoning. We can go ahead and start with the downtown specific plan area. Who's going to speak for you all? Councilmember Nash?
So, the Subcommittee on Districts 2 through 5 Planning and Zoning recognizes that non-residential development often has adverse impacts from the jobs housing imbalance, and we seek to address barriers to developing additional housing in districts 2 through 5 to mitigate some of those adverse impacts. We will review aspects of the existing zoning ordinance that may create obstacles to building more housing, including building heights, floor area ratios, onsite parking, and units per acre. We will identify areas where we can change zoning classification in order to promote additional housing close to essential services and transit. We will explore building affordable housing on city land in districts 2 through 5. Our city has finite resources, and we are prioritizing within those constraints. With this in mind, our first task is to work on the downtown specific plan and possible opportunities at any large parcels remaining in districts 2 through 5. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, we'll go here and hear from Mayor Protem Taylor on the, on the other council subcommittee. Mayor Protem Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. This is the Subcommittee for District 1 Recommendations. This is Celia Taylor. So far, we have had two meetings with staff and two meetings with community members. Because the issues are embedded in the practices towards one area of our city, I believe we need to expand the scope of the Subcommittee. And here are my recommendations. To open up Connect Menlo and the general plan to review zoning policies and practices to make adjustments as appropriate. Incorporate both SB 1000 and AB 617. These tools require both cities and counties to have disadvantaged communities to incorporate environmental justice policies. Also, air quality monitors installed and measured, taken regularly. I'm also requesting that we do workshops on environmental impact reports with the intention of educating the public on the policy, process, and procedures required by law to ensure an inclusionary process. Also, requesting that there are study sessions on all EIRs to ensure linking all development impacts. Requesting a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss publicly commissioners' perspectives on all related policies. Also, develop a robust emergency evacuation and access plan for the entire city, beginning in District 1. Also, define and update the community amenities list, which we have actually started that process already. There was a suggestion that was posted in the newspaper by one of our community members about developing a blue ribbon committee focused on developing solutions for council to consider. And lastly, transportation infrastructure needs to be provided first before any more development continues, especially transportation solutions that can be implemented sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay. And so, to be clear, so we have started working on a community amenities list, and I appreciate Councilmember Taylor, I mean, Mayor Protem Taylor identifying other areas that she'd like to go into. And we can go ahead and talk about that in our, what's our next Subcommittee meeting? We have it scheduled?
I think we've been trying to schedule it, so we'll just check in with both of you tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And so, we can go ahead and go over those, where we are now as we've committed a community amenities list. Mr. Pergaro's has been kind enough, along with professional staff, to really provide us an extensive, an extensive list of funding for all of the funding possibilities for all of those different community amenities, so we would understand how that could go ahead and relate to the different mechanisms within Connect Menlo. And then, the next portion of that process now is to really start looking at the Connect Menlo and make, and making recommendations on that to go ahead and bring back to council. So, but I think we, and we've done a number of community meetings around that to get outreach about what's really important to the community. And candidly, I may have some exciting things to bring forward about some of those community amenities to you all real soon. So, I think that covers it, right? All right. Any other items this evening anyone wants to report out on?
Well, if I can, just say that I think, given the work of both of the subcommittees, we thought it would be prudent to do a housing study session. Some of the existing legislation would be helpful to both of the committees. And so, we're targeting that, I think, for 11:15 right now. That may move, but just to give it a little bit of publicity.
Sounds great. All right. I think we're done for the evening. Great work, everyone. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn.